Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our new first-floor city council chambers. What do you guys think? No more lining up and standing in the hallway and trying to get up that quick elevator. So I think this is going to be a big improvement. I think you've noticed that the height of the chamber here in the front of us is about four, five, six inches lower, so you can actually see us. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm not sure, but nevertheless, I think it's a good thing, and that way we have better connection with the audience and you have better connection with us. What about?
Thank you, Tim Legler, for all of the work.
Yeah, Tim Legler, our facilities director, did all the work on this, so thanks, Tim, and his staff. So today is May 13th, 2025. It's 1:00 PM. This is the City of Prescott's city council study session, and we'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Potem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Freeworth is excused from the meeting.
So we have two items on our agenda today for the study session. City Clerk, do you want to read item A, please?
Presentation and discussion regarding the Whiskey Off-Road Mountain Bike Event.
City Manager, are you going to kick this off for us?
I will. I'd love to. Thank you very much. So, and come ahead, Todd. So I will just introduce Todd Sadow. I think everybody in the room knows him as the owner of Epic Rides. They've held the Whiskey Off-Road here for 20 consecutive, well, actually not consecutive because of COVID, but 20 years, and it's an event that we love. We're excited to have in the city. We'd love to keep in the city. And so Todd is going to present, and then staff will be available for any questions and any help the council may need. So Todd, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I want to start off by at least making a little statement. I know there are a lot of people that sent us emails and had concerns about the Whiskey Off-Road. I don't think anybody up here has any intention of ever canceling this event. It's been iconic and going on here for 20 years, but we want to be able to balance the economic benefits, the history of this event, the recognition of our bicycle-associated activities throughout the city, and then be able to balance that with the amount of taxpayer dollars that we're committing to sponsor and support it in long term. So that's the balance that we have as council members, to be able to determine what the appropriate balance is for taxpayer dollars and what the contribution that Whiskey Off-Road makes to the city. So I heard from a number of people thinking that we were even considering not renewing this or canceling it. That's never been our concern. So with that said, Todd, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Potem, Councilman, thank you for your time today. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you. City staff, thanks for your efforts. It has been a enduring year, so it's nice to be here today, have this conversation. So, two things to control. There we go. I'm going to start off with just a little bit of background. So 22 years ago, we founded the Whiskey Off-Road, and together, the City of Prescott and Epic Rides set out to build a marketing vehicle for Prescott to elevate you and put you on the same plane with your neighbors, Sedona, Flagstaff, and to make, to draw greater attention to your natural resources and your quality of life. So together with our vision, we built an event that does that. As we built this event, the city has played a financial role in enabling the components that make it destination-worthy. So similar to, it's a public-private partnership. I'm sure that's familiar to each of you. Similar to the Olympics, the Super Bowl, Ironman, which is kind of akin to us, not mentioned, but also similar is like the Albuquerque Balloon Fest. It's a public-private partnership. The city benefits greatly on a tax level, identity level, and it's justified to help the event along to create a bigger experience that can create a bigger impact. The whiskey is scaled to fit Prescott, Prescott's size, to call out its natural resources, and to be on-brand for your community. Prescott's a trailstown, always has been. So the Whiskey Off-Road serves to champion your community. Important point. So y'all contribute somewhere in the neighborhood of around $80,000 a year in cash, plus infrastructure. I want to walk you through it. $30,000, cash purse to the pros. $25,000, a free concert for the whole community. $12,000, 65-room nights for my team and I to travel to your community, have a place to stay, and to produce a world-class mountain bike event in the center of your Commerce District. $5,000 to $10,000, content creation. Contemporary way of saying "marketing." That number's up to you guys. Every year, it changes. Whatever you're willing to pitch in, we tend to pitch in some, too, and we bring contemporary marketing people to your community. $5,000 for a stage. The stage is in our contract. It's been there from the beginning of time. You guys sold your stage. It became a cost. If you hadn't sold your stage, it wouldn't become a cost. That's okay. But that's your breakout of how we spend the money that you contribute to the event. Those are things that a traditional mountain bike event is not built to afford, but when you plug them into the Whiskey Off-Road, they go from community to world-class, okay? There's a return on each one of those that trickles down to your bottom line. Your $77,000, $82,000, plus all of our revenues, we produced six cycling events in three days, a day of free concerts, and an industry expo. That's where that money goes. That's how it gets spent, and that's what comes from it. Three days of programming. When we founded the event, it was on Whiskey Row, and we had two parking spots, and it was one day. And I think you guys contributed $4,000 that year. Pardon me. Parched. So the background is that we set out to create something notable for your community. The good news is, we've succeeded. We grew an event from 200 to 2,000 participants that fills up early every year. It's an iconic event, Mayor Good, to use your word. It's an iconic event. North America and beyond knows about the Whiskey Off-Road. If you talk to a mountain biker, it's perceived as one of the best mountain bike events anyone can do in America. Even better news, roughly 90% of the mountain bike event attendees every year don't live in Prescott. So different from your Arts and Crafts Fair on the square, where a bunch of artists come to your community, sit up on your grass, and sell things to your community, take your community's money and leave, we do the opposite. We bring in an affluent audience that rides $5,000 to $10,000 mountain bikes, is healthy, has a career, a family, homes, sometimes two or three of them. They spend all their money here. They have an amazing good time here. They love your town, and then they leave. So it's the opposite. Now, the important number up here is the bike event attendees. Lots of numbers get thrown around about economic impact and the deliverables to the bottom line for this event. As a practice, Epic Rides has always focused on the mountain bike event attendee. We know the most about them. We are super conservative. Sometimes don't even factor in the non-mountain bike event attendee to the economic impact. Because when we do a post-event survey, we'll get 300 responses from the mountain bikers, and we'll get 10 from the concertgoers. We don't know enough about them. We're not going to act as though we do. We stay conservative because we want to keep, we want to have a sustaining relationship with you guys and always over-deliver. So in this case, 6,000 mountain bike event attendees, 90% from out of town, 5,500 people are coming to town for the mountain bike-specific event and having a good time in your community on event weekend. Purpose. We talked about why we did it. We talked about how we've succeeded in doing it. As is stated in our contract with you, the City of Prescott, and has been since the beginning of time, the direct benefits align with the City of Prescott's strategic goals in economic development, quality of life, and community, in that it cultivates a vibrant, diverse, and dynamic economy that attracts and retains businesses and a skilled workforce, and promotes educational, cultural, and recreational opportunities that contribute to the health and well-being of your community. Direct benefits, gift clause, check. Your initiatives for 22 years have been our initiatives. We market you as a global, globally-relevant mountain bike destination. When you guys wanted to launch Pimba, we supported it. We fundraised for it. When the state, Arizona Cycling Association, launched, we supported it. We helped launch it. I sat on the board. We still fundraise for them, their whole statewide league, plus local teams, through the Whiskey Off-Road and our other events. When you guys wanted to build Spence Basin, we created a fundraising campaign. When you wanted to build Bean Peaks, we created a fundraising campaign. Your initiatives have been our initiatives. So where's the win? From the beginning, the Whiskey Off-Road was designed to be a win-win-win. And the biggest winner has always been the City of Prescott. It drives an estimated $3 million into your economy on event weekend. On event weekend, no multipliers in that, just wham-bam, week of the event. That's $100,000 to your bottom line in taxable revenue. $100,000 before April 1st, 2025. The event was designed, there's so much sauce, you guys. This was like a kid with an idea and a marketing plan and a mind, dream come true with a city that got behind it and said, "Let's make something amazing together." The event was designed to optimize bed tax dollars, to scoop up those tax dollars for you guys. When we arrived, it's funny, I read the other day that someone said, "Prescott doesn't have a shoulder season." It used to. It used to. We checked that box. The end of April, we open registration. In November, people start pre-riding immediately. They're inspired. Their journey has begun. Their emotional attachment to your community started in that moment, and they start pre-riding the course to get ready to ensure success. We'll see the percentage of people that pre-ride before the event that don't live here. Additional visits. It expands your tourism season. March and April are people getting ready. End of April, how hot is it in Phoenix? Right. The last great experience that everyone that lives there, that mountain bikes did, was the weekend before in Prescott. You've got four months of runway of too hot to ride down there and perfect to get up here, and you're the first choice off of I-17. An elevated profile with your neighbors, but you're the first left-hand turn. Unparalleled worldwide advertising. World champions, several of them. Olympians, several of them. Two of them a few weeks ago. Two of America's fastest mountain bikers came here just a few weeks ago to race. They're going to go spend the rest of the season in Europe. World-class. Community discount night. You guys give funds to the event. I showed you how we spend them, but we also like to give back, not just through donations. We highly discount registration for anyone that lives in Prescott. That's $15,000 to $20,000 off the top line for us, but we do it because we want your community to have ownership and to be proud of this event, and because you're supporting it. Free concerts for the whole community. We produce a free concert, a whole day of free music. That's where that money goes to. It doesn't generate any revenue. I have staff that work on it. I pay them, but it doesn't generate any revenue. It's a free concert. We fundraise $70,000 a year, last four years. Intangibles, you can't measure these. Inspires community pride and volunteerism, engages local youth, supports local bike shops and ecosystem. Your shops are healthy. You should be proud of that. Deliverables. If I could summarize this slide, the Whiskey Off-Road is a walking, talking postcard year-round for the City of Prescott, and it culminates every year on event weekend with 5,500 people from out of town showing up and spending money and having emotionally-charged experience in your community. Now, getting into some of the grainy other things that I'm kind of proud of, actually, generates millions and millions of marketing impressions for you guys annually. Just a few weeks ago, when the event happened, we were up at almost a million views, over a million views, over 800,000 in our social media alone for the 30-day period, not to mention the media coverage, the content creators, newsletters, well north of a million views and impressions during that one month of the event. But even better, in a changing landscape of marketing where everything's digital and it trends really quickly, we're constantly refeeding those environments with evergreen content, bringing in the top content creators associated with the sport every year so that you stay relevant. Visitor acquisition. 96% of visitor attendees are more likely to return to Prescott. 72% are more likely to return to Prescott for non-event-related mountain biking. 58% would have never come here if it wasn't for the Whiskey Off-Road. 34% of visitor participants visited Prescott in advance of event weekend to pre-ride the course. That's an additional visit. It's a proven event that delivers year after year after year. To keep anything fresh for 22 years takes some effort. More deliverables. This is where it gets interesting. Mayor Good, you mentioned it's about being equitable, making sure that the event is carrying its weight and that all of the funds are allocated equally to events that help perpetuate the community. That's important to us, too. Very. Life of the event, conservative numbers. It's driven about 40 million, over 40 million, into your community. Your spend cash-wise is $540,000. When you throw in infrastructure, based on some numbers I've seen recently, it's probably about 1.2 million. So you spent about 1.2 million, and you've gotten well north of 40 million back. Seems pretty good. Average annual impact, $3 million, direct impact. Annualized, $6 million. So this is where it gets interesting. I know that you guys have different economic impact numbers. Right? Mayor Potem, do you know what yours are?
Yes, I had to take, I had to look at that, but I believe they're coming out of, we have a split with the city and the county in terms of what we have been able to make. So I've been reading about it.
Okay. So we took a closer look at your output, and it appears to have a mistake in it. There's two numbers that are flip-flopped. The 90%, the travel from out of town, the spend the most money, and the 10% that are local. So that bed tax revenue is not optimized, which is a massive contributor to the bottom-line number that you're measuring our event against. So your $60,000 in your impact report appears incorrect, probably just an oversight, but as the report states, it's only as good as the inputs that have been put in there. I know applied economics is a reputable data house, the good what they do. It doesn't say if it's an in-plan model analysis. Do you know, Christina? Is it? Okay. But with that simple flip of the numbers, which represents the numbers we've seen almost every year of the event, your $1.8 million turns into $3.8 million, which turns into $5.7 million annualized. And, oh, by the way, that $100,000 that we drive in on event week, now that your new tax hit on April 1, is really about $130,000. So it seems like your report might be underrepresenting the value of the event to your community, and I think that it's probably worth us following up after this to talk about it more and look at it together. Any questions so far? Excuse me?
Please continue.
Thank you. More deliverables. So the last four years, we raised the registration fees a few years ago, coming out of the pandemic. We had to. We had intentionally suppressed them, and we had expanded to a national series of events because we wanted to keep the events very accessible. But what happened is, events of comparable value were charging way more, and then, of course, the pandemic caused hard times. So we got aggressive to get the price of the event, which is still an extraordinary deal when you compare it to its peers in the industry like Leadville or Sea Otter, that all cost more. So we moved forward, but we also added in more for the donations. So the amount we raise also doubled through the events, and so as a point of pride, there we go, our give-back grew a lot, and we're, I think our buttons are popping about it because we love raising funds and love even more, nothing against Pimba, raising funds for non-bike-related reasons. The media accused us of throwing a party that happens to have a mountain bike event nearby years ago, and honestly, I'm proud of that. But anytime we can all show up with our bikes and get together and have fun and revel in accomplishment and enjoy camaraderie, there's lots of people in this world that don't get to do that. They're at a different intersection in their life. And so the opportunity to raise funds for Prevent Child Abuse Arizona, Yavapai County Food Bank since day one of the event, the Education Foundation, which we love working with, and the Arizona Cycling Association, is just icing on the cake for us. Of course, we love new trails, too, so it's always fun to drive fundraising for Pimba, too. So where do we go from here? We're past the end of our current, our last agreement. Business continuity is important. There are people on my team that I've worked with since day one, 25 years. I would say half of my team I've worked with for at least 15 years. No plans to produce a Whiskey Off-Road next year is inconvenient. It would be extremely appreciated if we could get very serious about equitable interests in this event and get a renewal in place, and if we don't think that can happen urgently, then I'll propose that an addendum to our existing agreement for one year to let us go chase sponsors and have the confidence it's going to happen so that we can start planning, because, believe it or not, the planning cycle is a year or more. It would be very meaningful to us, and then we can hash out the terms, or we could, I would love to co-op an economic impact analysis together on next year's event, which we did with you on the Seedman Research analysis back in 2013. That was a co-opt thing that we did to establish value so that we can get down the road further together.
Councilman Gambogi, you had a question?
I'll let him finish, and then I'll ask.
Thanks, Ted. Something to give us continuity and to work, to begin working together again in a positive way, the only way we've ever known to work with the city would be meaningful at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Todd. Ted, you want to ask your question now?
Yeah, Todd, you talked about entry fees. What are the entry fees? What are the entry fees here compared to other locations?
So of our events? Okay, so the 24 Hours in the Old Pueblo, our Tucson event, is close to 300 per person. It's a different experience. It's completely remote, gets compared to Burning Man.
I went to your website. I think your highest entry fee is about 200 and your lowest is about 100.
So the Tour of the White Mountains is 150, I think. This one's 200. These are starting prices before you get into the tiered stuff. And this is for the, the main adult, like kids are, you know, the discounted, like there's all kinds of different tiered pricing. But just talking in terms of the primary registration, 150 Tour of the White Mountains, 200 for Prescott, 275, I think, for the 24 Hours in the Old Pueblo, up over 300 for some people.
And, and you quoted about 2,000 participants here in Prescott. What, how many participants do you have at the other locations?
Yeah, the 24 Hours in the Old Pueblo has 2,000 and it fills up in one hour on October 1st, five months before the event. It is one of, it is, it might be the single strongest mountain bike event in the country.
In Tucson?
That's the Tucson event. The Tour of the White Mountains-
I thought you said Pueblo.
Yeah, well, Tucson's referred to as the Old Pueblo. So it's 24 Hours in the Old Pueblo. It's a 24-hour relay mountain bike race. The Tour of the White Mountains is up over 1,000 riders. You're welcome.
Mayor Protem?
Hey, Todd, since most of us on the council here are, weren't here involved in this 20 years ago, how was the initial sponsorship, if you will, agreed upon of $5,000? How did that come about?
Yeah, so it was a match in marketing. And I did that, I arranged that with Greg Pfister. I think he's economic development at Prescott Valley now. And then, so, yeah, do you want to talk about that a little bit? You want me to?
You know, looking at the scale of how we got from 5,000 to 134,000, I was just wondering what, how was that calibrated? And who decided that? Was that you or the city at the time? Because I know one of the things I think that we're looking at doing is establishing a policy as we go forward for all events. And how we calculate that, I've been kind of doing a little research of my own in other communities and how they do that. So I was just curious, since you were here 20 years ago, dealing with the city at the time, how they figured that out?
Yeah, yeah, so that, my, the second slide where I referenced the cost of the, that is how that number got created. We, you know, we, the first, okay, in 2007 is when we got serious about the whiskey off-road together. That's when there was a vision and we said, hey, I basically said, hey, I think I can, we can do this if we, if we go down this path. The first thing we did was add a free live concert for the community. And it worked really well. I believe we did that for two years. And then we added the pro cash, and we added an expo. And then we added a pro cash purse. That started at 20,000, went up to 40, came back down to 30, finding a sweet spot. And then, yeah, and that's, we, that was the evolution, basically. We were, we were, these numbers represent an objective, a marketing, they're tied to a marketing objective. It delivers something. So the free live music brings the whole community out. It adds another layer of entertainment so people stay longer. We expanded from one day to two days of programming. The pro cash purse brings in the hardest-hitting pro mountain bikers in North America, equal cash purse from the very beginning when we launched it. And it, so you've got both media-worthy people to talk about and you've got, these days, some of the most prevalent content creators in the mountain biking space, all showing up to chase the cash purse. So they, it serves a function, right?
So, so Todd, as you went along, did you, did you produce the numbers on your end for the city to evaluate that amount of money every year? Or did the city produce the numbers in terms of what they were making? I know, you know, 20 years ago, we probably weren't as sophisticated in data collection as we are today. But did you come forward with the, the amount of money and the city confirmed it? Or did the city speak to you about, you know, what was brought into the city at that time?
Yeah, so, and, and, so we started going down this path and I'll never forget it. City manager at the time, Steve Norwood, said, hey, the one thing I know is that whiskey off-road weekend, I drive around to the hotels and every parking lot's packed and every car has a bike rack on it. And so it was kind of rudimentary in the beginning, right? But from observation, it felt like the right thing to do and it seemed reinforced, to be reinforced by the business and so forth. So then, let's see here, I'm trying to think of how we, I got, I got excited about, I guess, the reminiscing of it. In 2013, we co-opted an economic impact analysis. So the city and Epic Rides each contributed equally to an analysis, analysis that was conducted by the Seedman Research Institute from ASU. So they are a credible entity that does, they did the Super Bowl, they do all kinds of stuff, like throughout the state, right? They came in, they studied the event, and they're the ones that estimated its actual impact. They used the in-plan model. Since then, we grew a lot and then we contracted after the pandemic. But as we grew, our contract with you guys and the other communities was to deliver an economic impact analysis after every event so that we could track it. And, and so we used their model, we created, we took their tool, refined it, and then used it to report back to the city of Prescott and other cities. And then I want to say in 2017 or 2018, we brought that tool to BBC Research out of Denver, which is also a very reputable research house, and had them, A, review the tool to make sure it was still relevant and accurate, and then they added on components to it as well for us. And so that's the life of our economic impact analysis. And as I mentioned earlier, we've always done our best to stay super conservative because the last thing we want is for you guys to say, hey, you guys are exaggerating and yada, yada. Like, that's not the relationship we want. We want you to say, actually, it's probably a little higher. And we say, great.
One last thing. So it's my understanding that tracking, and I'm not saying that you did it or we've done it, but the tracking nowadays is through credit cards, cell phones, and then, of course, TPT or the sales. Is there anything else I'm missing on, on tracking systems and way to track and how, do you do anything different than that or the company?
Yeah, we're old school. We just send them a survey. We get a big enough sample and then we extrapolate the data. So tracking is a, it's not perfect. You know, placer.ai, I know you guys subscribe to it, cellphone tracking. So a lot of people turn off the tracking mechanisms on their phone these days, or it's only on when the app is open. You have that option to set your phone that way. Apple phones are really good at not being tracked. So there's, the data is not perfect in the tracking mechanisms that are out there. I wish I could say we were more sophisticated because we literally pull a survey, get all the raw data and crunch it. And I'm glad to show you that data. We can talk you through our entire analysis, whatever you'd like.
Thank you. I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge, you have another question?
Yeah, but I have a question, but before I do, I've always encouraged resident participation. And I think, Todd, you have set a new record. I counted all the emails I received and they added up to 146, which I think is a new record. Take me back to page two. You mentioned that the county, I remember you saying you spent 30 grand on prize money and 25 on concert, but he had a few other entries. I missed that.
30 on the cash purse. We pay out on the pro cash purse, 30,000 on the pro cash purse. We pay out more than that, but I'm not using the money earmarked from you for the difference, just to be clear. 25,000 concert, 12,000, which didn't use to be that, but God, the inflation. It is just jacked-up hotel rooms. Good for room tax, but geez. 12,000 for 65-room nights. We, we do our best to keep the rooms super efficient. We do Airbnbs as often as we can to get as many people in them as possible. The critical piece is that the rooms are near downtown so that our team can walk back and forth for three days and produce a world-class mountain bike event for you. 5,000 to 10,000 for content creation, 5,000 for the stage, plus infrastructure. But that's the cash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moore?
Just a quick question about the expo. Do you have vendors that come in and sell?
Some sell, a lot are just showing off. Like, for instance, a company like Shimano, big, big company for cycling, drivetrains, brakes, they won't sell. Usually they don't sell. They'll, they'll have a local retailer next to them and they'll drive sales through the retailer. But yeah, it's a smorgasbord.
Yeah, I was just curious because I do a lot of off-site events through my business and I know sometimes when I travel to other communities, I'm required to get a temporary business license and I'm required to pay sales tax in that community, even though I don't have a business in that community. So I was wondering if the participants that are participating in the expo are contributing to our tax base as well.
Absolutely. It's a requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we have a number of public comments that we want to be able to listen to and then we'll have a wrap-up and then we have a second item on our agenda. But I will say that about seven or eight years ago, when I was first on council, I made the comment that, and you were here, that there was never an intention to provide as permanent subsidy for this event. We wanted to make sure that when we started, we gave you some seed money to help you get it going and it's done extremely well. It's world-renowned. And we know that you're a for-profit corporation or a subchapter S or however you're organized, but we have a very high standard of fiduciary duty. The tax dollars that we contribute as a sponsorship or support, not our money, that's the taxpayers' money. And when we make an investment or we make a contribution, we've got to be able to show that we are getting a return on that that's justified in extending those dollars to this event. So that doesn't mean that it's going to continue to go up as the event becomes more and more profitable. It's profitable for you and that's why you now have a circuit of events throughout the state and even in the other areas of the West. So being able to know that we are contributing in an effective way and being able to use those tax dollars but not continue to provide it to a, quite frankly, a for-profit organization, there has to be a balance and a limit to it. So that's why we're looking at maybe restructuring this to more of a sponsorship so that it's clear and it's predictable, so that you know what would be available to you both next year and years afterwards. But at the same time, we can show to the taxpayers that we've analyzed this and it does represent a return that we can quantify to the city. So let's go ahead and go to public comment.
Yamira Flores?
Thank you, Todd. Well, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, I really, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. I appreciate your taking the time to listen to what we have to say. And this event, as we all know, is an important event for the city of Prescott. We just heard from Todd on all of the different benefits that it gives us, so I am not going to repeat them again. The one that I do want to emphasize that he didn't mention is about the youth participation. That's huge for us as well. We have over six high school teams in Prescott, all of which participate in this event and really get motivated from when they're four years old, participating in that kid's race that he has, and continue to grow up and become really great outdoors recreation, you know, enjoy that. But what I did want to say is that on everything that we saw and the benefits that it provides, we need to be concerned with the possibility of losing this event. And I do want to make you aware of the fact that it's not a given that we can continue with this event if the sponsorship is lowered to a level that it's not going to make sense for Epic Rides to continue. We need to be aware of the fact that Epic Rides owns the trademark for the whiskey off-road. This can go anywhere. It doesn't have to be in Prescott. It can be in any city where they have trails. And I am sure that there are many cities that would love to have that name recognition somewhere else. And it has taken 20 years to build this up here in Prescott. I'd hate for us to lose that. So just want to make you aware of that. The other thing that I want to make you aware of is that we do have a partnership with the Prescott National Forest for this event. They actually have gone through a process of approving this vendor, Epic Rides-
You have 30 seconds.
-to do, to do this event. And it would take them another four or five years to approve a different vendor if we chose to go somewhere else. So just wanted to do that and respectfully ask that you continue to support this event. It's very important for our community. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Okay. My name is Dove Thornburg. I am a resident of Prescott for the past nine years. I'd like to mention that the reason both Yamira and I are in Prescott is the whiskey off-road, since we happened to be in town during that event and we fell in love with that event and with the city at the time. I'll be brief. I think at this point, there should be no doubt that this event is extremely profitable and makes a significant, huge contribution to Prescott's economy. We're talking about a number of about $3 million a year, or as Todd mentioned, almost $40 million over the past 22 years. The city's investment in that event, in terms of cash and in kind, is somewhere between half a million to a million, off the top of my head. So if I look at that return on investment, I'd like to have it on every single one of my own investments and I'd be very happy with that. I think it's well above industry average, as well as other statistics. So I think the concept of negotiating and haggling over 20 or 30,000 dollars and taking the risk of losing millions of dollars in contributions to our economy is beyond ridiculous. I would say negligent. And since the mayor mentioned fiduciary responsibility, I think he conveniently just mentioned one aspect of fiduciary responsibility. And let me read a little bit here. A city government's fiduciary responsibility is to act in the best interests of its residents, which generally includes managing public resources in a prudent manner and promoting the economic and social well-being of the community. I think we all agree that the contribution the whiskey makes for the community certainly falls within that contribution. Failing to continue with a highly profitable event could potentially breach this duty if the decision is based on-
You have 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Thank you. If the decision is either based on unnecessary requirements or that lack in a reasonable basis or fail to balance the economic benefits against other considerations. Let me just mention a couple more facts.
I'm sorry, sir, but your time's up.
I have 20 more seconds.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, members of council. I wasn't going to speak, but I would encourage you to consider Todd's proposal that you give him a year's extension. The reason is, I think you need to look at all of the events in Prescott and not- The reason is, I think you need to look at all of the events in Prescott and not single out one. I think you need a consistent policy in place before you start taking things away or even giving more things. I have been a proponent of you looking more closely at some of the other events that occur in this community, and I'm kind of at a loss for why this one is being singled out. So I'm just urging you to take a look at his proposal to give him a year extension, and then get this whole thing straightened out for all the events. Thank you.
If we could hold off on the applause so that everybody has an opportunity to address the council, that would be fantastic. Brad Green.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pretan and councilman, thank you for listening to us. I'm a long-term resident of Prescott. I'm here representing myself and my wife that have been here over 30 years. And the reason that I'm here is because of whiskey. I came to the first whiskey in 2009, met my wife in 2010 here, and moved to Prescott because of the whiskey. So it's personal to me that the city support this event. The thing that I'd like for, and I appreciate you doing the financial analysis, but I'd like to also request that you include the social and cultural aspects of this event on the city. The cultural and social aspects can be measured not only in the commodity that we have in the city, and after the whiskey goes away, we have an awful lot of mountain biking community members here. But the other thing that I think you should consider also is the health aspects that this event and the culture bring to the city. We have a lot of mountain bike people who are elderly, including myself, who have been in mountain biking for so long because we enjoy the health benefits. And the health benefits that come to the community through this culture and sponsored by this epic event is unmeasurable, but we all know that it is very, very important to the health and the financial stability of the community. Thank you for listening to us.
Deborah Cox.
Hello and thank you. My name is Deborah Cox. I'm the president of Bike Prescott here in Prescott. And my organization attempts to serve the community in a variety of ways, but our main product is to host bicycle rides for everyone. And we host rides for mountain bikers, road bikers, gravel bikers, e-bikers, and people of all levels. On meetup.com, we have over 1,200 people that follow us regularly. And they follow us because they're interested in cycling. Cycling is a huge sport and a growing sport, not just here in Prescott, but throughout the nation and probably worldwide for all I know. But a lot of these people live in Prescott, and many of them do not. Many of them come to visit and to participate in the truly enviable trail system that we have here. The trail system that we have here has enabled us to attract a truly unique opportunity for a town of this size, a city of this size, excuse me. We have pro athletes that come and participate yearly, which is a huge, it's a crazy, exciting thing for all of us. And it's exciting not just for people who cycle, but it's just fun for the community in general. The number of kids and families that are downtown is huge. So I highly encourage you to do whatever needs to be done to help this event continue to enrich our community. If it's this opportunity to squander, well, squander is a big word, but it might be the right one here, because once this event leaves, if it is forced to leave for financial reasons, it would be extraordinarily difficult for Prescott to replace it or get it back. So that is my preferred outcome here, obviously. I can't speak to the economics, but I will tell you that I do own two vacation rentals here in Prescott. And I always know when the registration for the Whiskey Off-Road is online, and I know it because both of my properties are booked within several hours. And those people are the easiest guests to accommodate because they're too tired to party, they don't cook, their kitchens are immaculate. What they do is they come here, they spend time outside with their family and their friends, they eat, they drink, they shop, they go to restaurants, and they have a crazy good time. So I don't know anything further about the economics, but that's my experience. And I just think that it's extraordinarily energizing, it makes our town vibrant, and it's an opportunity that a lot of places just plain don't have. They don't have the natural resources to support it. So please do whatever is necessary to work with Todd to make something happen so that this can continue. Thank you.
Wayne Wright.
Thank you for the opportunity. I also own two vacation rental businesses in Prescott, and I want to point out that Whiskey Off-Road Weekend is a weekend where we can charge the highest rate of the entire year, and it gets booked a year in advance. Whiskey Off-Road Weekend, when we think it'll be in 2026, is the only weekend we have booked for next year already. So that reflects the amount of demand to a local business. I also had the experience this year, I play in a local rock band, and we were performing on Whiskey Road, Whiskey Off-Road Weekend on that Friday night at Whiskey River. We play Friday nights there from time to time. Usually by closing time, there's a handful of people, the staff is mopping up, they've got chairs up on the tables, ready to go home. Whiskey Off-Road Weekend, people were up dancing, whooping it up, hollering at us, "Why are we quitting so early?" They wanted to keep on partying. So I just want to relate those examples of the economic impact I've seen the Whiskey Off-Road have. Thank you.
Matthew Hart.
Good afternoon. I'm here representing myself and the Viveli Hospitality Group. We are a group of restaurants here in Prescott. We've got five locations, easily accessible from downtown with over 150 employees. And on the economic side of things, I think it's very easy for us to quantify the positive impact that this event has for us every year. Depending on the specific year, we can see anywhere from 10% to 55% increase in sales over that event weekend, specifically the Friday through Sunday. That doesn't include any of the pre-ride days, any of the extra events that we work with Epic Rides to provide to the community. But for me, that's a very quantifiable way to see the return on the city's investment. I think on the other side of things, where it's not as easy to really determine the value, I really see the event as a whole, both for myself and for all of our employees, as a huge change in what is available to Prescott. I can't really think of very many opportunities that happen within the city where so many people come to enjoy all of the natural resources that Prescott has, while also being able to contribute financially to what the city has going on. And for me, I think it's a great opportunity to really look beyond just the financial value and look at what the event as a whole contributes to our community that isn't as easily quantifiable with data and numbers. So, thank you.
Scott Bedeau.
Thank you. This council's vision statement pledges to produce, and I quote, "A place where individuals, families, and businesses enjoy outdoor adventures, vibrant cultural events, a prosperous economy, and the promise of a bold tomorrow." As the mayor and Ted mentioned, you all have received quite a large number of emails from people mapping this event to all four of those aspects that you all have promised to produce for the city. My concern is the city's responded to many of those emails and sent out communications to your employees that I believe lacks important context about the event and doesn't adequately describe the current challenge, which I think you heard from Todd, is a real risk of leaving our city. I've been in contact with a lot of you, a lot of city staff and other partners, and here's a couple important aspects that I think need highlighting for the public record. You've already heard this is much more than a bike race. The format has elaborated over two decades, and I'm kind of least surprised that a lot of city staff and council don't know about some of that elaboration. We shouldn't forget that the city asked for a lot of this expansion, which comes with it associated costs. The event's also a huge catalyst for the 450-plus miles of trails that we now enjoy, as Bill Feldmeyer recently highlighted for you all. Secondly, the money provided to Epic, it doesn't come from the city's general fund. Some of the services that you provide to them and other events do, but the money comes from the accommodations tax that's levied on tourists in their lodging. That money went from 90K in 2023, which was just 5.7% of the overall 1.6 million spent by that board, and already went down to 65K for this year, and now you're asking it for to go down even further, despite the overall accommodations tax expenditure is going up by 13%. This is the third largest event in our town, granted to you. Third is the question that around the city provided services. Nobody's ever asked Epic to pay for those or even estimated them until suddenly estimating them without their involvement and asking them to pay for it. And the costs have also been lumped together with the previously mentioned accommodation taxes in the emails that the city is sending out to people. So in closing, I want to say that I personally believe that Epic has been a fantastic partner. They've worked hard to expand from a pretty modest little race to a world-renowned event that many people have spoken about with you. Of course, you have a fiscal responsibility, but so does Epic. They can't continue to put on an event that attracts the level of participation that you all have asked for, and also incur increasing expenses, and still provide all the community services that Todd mentioned, especially if the city decreases its support. So if you couldn't hear it in Todd's voice, I'm confident the event is at risk of leaving Prescott, not just because of the downgrade in funding, but the process and the way in which the city has gone about it. Many other communities have already reached out to me saying they'd love to scoop this event up on the cheap.
You have 30 seconds.
My ask to you, thank you very much, is that you direct city staff immediately to continue supporting this event without downgrading the financial spend, rather than risking the council that's responsible for losing something our city spent 20 years supporting. Thank you.
Barry Barb.
Mayor, council? I hadn't planned on speaking, but I was really surprised. I think the tension in this room is palpable, and I think that shows the importance that this event means to so many people here and to the city. I've been operating restaurants downtown for 26 years. For the last 20 of them, I've stood outside my restaurant, El Gato's Wall on Goodwin Street, and heard the bikes take off from Whiskey Row. Every year, the sound of the locusts starting at Whiskey Row gets louder and louder and louder and louder. I know what the impact of this is on our business, not just on those three days. And believe it or not, because of our location, those aren't our best three days of the year. But I know how many people come in months in advance to train, how many people come in afterwards. I know people I meet when I go out of town, out of state, and I send from Prescott, "Oh, that's a place to bike rides." So one thing I do want to say that I've not heard here today, and I'm fairly disappointed, and if I missed it, I apologize, but Todd, I want to thank you. I want to thank you and your team for bringing a world-class event to our town that helps support our economy, our culture, our lifestyle, and creates a community around it. And I'm rather shocked that rather than begging this organization to stay, we are questioning the viability and the rationale behind what really is a minimal amount of money compared to what we get back on it. So I really hope you seriously are not considering diminishing or decreasing the value that you would place on this event. Because we, as business owners, we as a community, not all of us are bike riders, some of us used to be, not all of us are. We understand the value of this. We understand the value of something that's unique, that brings something to our community that you do not see in other towns. And the thought of losing that, you might as well throw that last weekend in March away. So thank you for listening, and thank you, Todd.
Tracy Taylor.
Hi, everyone. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wrote something, I'm going to read it really fast. Hey, Brad.
Please speak into the microphone so that people online can hear.
I would imagine many, if not most, of us can remember our first bicycle. We likely can still feel the elation of joy and freedom, the first time we found ourselves suddenly riding on our own with cheering parents yelling our name. I would also imagine many, if not most, can re-experience that excitement of watching our own children pedal away, smiling, a new confidence birthed that would carry them through each new life obstacle to be overcome. My husband, Lindy, a teacher at Mile High Middle School, and my son, Blue, have been riding the Whiskey Off-Road together since he was five. The ride has always occurred on the weekend or exact date of my father-in-law's birthday. The tradition of the whiskey and the feeling of community is always a bright spot in our year, no matter the hardships or curveballs life steals us. I know this is true not just for our family, but for the many people who come here to Prescott to challenge themselves and ultimately rekindle that joy first felt on that first bike, felt that first time they did something previously impossible. For every person, the ride may represent a different obstacle to be overcome: the loss of a loved one, a health crisis survived, physically challenging themselves, or maybe standing on a podium. I've had the joy of watching my son progress from the Granite Creek Family Fun Ride to his first 15 in the third grade, through the 25, and now 50. Along the way, he managed to win the state championship for his division on the PHS Mountain Bike Badger Team. The mountain bike community is unique. People compete with each other to better themselves and lift each other to their highest potential. It is a great gift to a great many to ride the Whiskey Off-Road through our beautiful forest on our world-class trails. What a feeling each person who rides, past volunteers encouraging you along the way, to a cheering crowd welcoming you back to the square. Cowbells, you did this, high fives abound. I watched my father-in-law ride his bike in a loop around the cul-de-sac every sunset. Diagnosed with Parkinson's, that evening bike ride was his commitment to that feeling of joy and freedom, no matter the obstacles of the disease.
Second.
Two years ago, we celebrated his 80th on the eve of the whiskey, and on Father's Day this last June, he passed sitting on the couch after his evening ride. This year, my husband rode the 50 on a borrowed titanium bike he put his father's pedals on. It's important--
10 more seconds, miss.
--to cherish and invest in the things that bind us together in community and that kindle freedom and joy in times of adversity. Thank you very much.
Adriana, I can't read how to pronounce your last name, I'm sorry. Doka, Tolke?
Okay, we'll take one more public comment and then we--
This is the last one.
Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Adriana Doka, and I'm on the Mile High Mountain Bike Team. This year was my first year riding on the Whiskey Row 15. I would really like to continue riding on that, and I hope the city of Prescott continues to help with that. Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
You know, once upon a time, back when the earth cooled, I used to race USCF. And I even did an Ironman triathlon. So it's been a long time since I talked about cycling. Todd mentioned that he presented one set of numbers and said the city has another set of numbers. I'd like to ask the city manager to share with everyone here the numbers we look at when we compare those to Todd's. when we compare those to Todd's.
Thank you, councilmember. So the report, let me toggle between screens here. Let's start with economic impact. That's a report that we contract out to an economist to complete for us. The city tax revenue that come in on that report, just the city portion, is $42,000, $42. County tax, $18, $18.21, and state, $112,000. On the expense side, there's $134,000 in expenses. That includes everything that Todd mentioned. I don't have any complaints about any of that. The cost, though, of some of the services being provided, I think, a driver is those escalate. So about $8,300 for traffic control, $4,500 for traffic aid from the traffic department. In addition to the staff hotel rooms, there's media hotel rooms, about $1,300. Contract itself, which is $60,000. Trash collection, which is $11,800. This is all from 2024 that I'm citing here. The police security traffic control is $22,100. So that gets us to the total, again, the total estimated expense to the city, $134,000. Of that, $87,000 is covered by the bed tax fund, as was mentioned, $46,900 from the general fund.
Okay, I think we're hearing a lot of very different numbers, both from Todd and from our analysis. I certainly would like to see those reviewed so that we can have a better understanding of what the actual numbers are. But as I said before, I think we have to make sure we balance the taxpayer dollars that are going to the Whiskey Off-Road in order to make it continue to be successful and here in Prescott, so we continue to be known as the iconic off-road whiskey extravaganza that we've been for so long and continue to be. So it's not like it was brought to us, we helped create it by supporting it from the very beginning, and it's grown substantially and been extremely successful. So I think if we can maybe review those numbers, then we're going to be bringing back a proposed contract, not just for an extension or a year or two, but hopefully for maybe a five-plus. So thank you very much. Okay, City Clerk, we'll move on to our next item.
Presentation and discussion regarding wildfire suppression systems for the Cathedral Pines community.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Portemp. Timeout.
Let's wait for them to clear.
I thought that was my audience.
I know, you just can't wait to get started, can you?
I thought I was going to have a great audience. Last time I had an audience like this, it was 18. I was in front of the judge explaining why I was hunting in the county park. They're leaving me.
Okay, I think you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. So my name is William Hartley. I'm representing Cathedral Pine. We came up with an idea, and it's called the Wildfire Suppression System. We think it's an important thing, and that's why I'm here today to present this. In the city of Prescott, let me figure out how to use this. There we go. There's almost 30,000 properties in the city of Prescott that have some risk of being affected by a wildfire over the next 30 years. This represents 99% of the properties in the city of Prescott. In May of 2002, most of us know about the Indian Fire. There was a stand made at Cathedral Pine as the fire grew and continued to torch. Crown out and spot ahead, plans were made to evacuate and protect the Cathedral Pines subdivision, which was in the path of the fire. The structural protection group consisted of the Prescott Fire Department and the Central Yoppa Pie Fire Disket. Units was moved into Cathedral Pine, took up positions that put the group with crews would soon be activating the fire. Now during that fire, they had 30 to 40 water drops, four of the seven homes burned up in our community. And one of the big reasons that that fire did not reach into Mountain Club or burn its way into Cathedral Pines is we just happened to have four tankers that were being transported from the city of Tucson to Utah, and they were stationed at the forest stash. So we're lucky that they were here, or else we would have been in trouble. Now, out of the 1.3 million firefighters that are here in the United States total, only 35% are active duty. The other part of that is part-timers, volunteers, and pay-per-fire firefighters. I'd like you to remember this photograph. Yeah, you got it right there. Okay. In this area here, we have a thick combustion wood, woodland brush mixed with mobile home parks and Cathedral Pines hillside. Now, if you look at the forest itself, you'll notice that the most of the trees are all the same height. That is called a standard growth. We have not had any trees removed than by logging in over 100 years. So this growth has been from the last logging that was done back in the 1900s, the early 1900s. Okay, so we have brush and trees providing timber for a wildfire to travel up the steep cliffs. At this photograph here, you'll see the good-looking me on the right-hand side back there. You could just barely see me in the brush. And on the left-hand side, this is part of a waterway that's used for water draining out of Cathedral Pines. So you can see how rough the terrain is. And this is in between the Mobile Home Park and us. And the terrain is real steep. In some places, it's about 45-degree angle; some places, it's about 25-degree angle. So why a wildfire suppression system? A mistake was made, but the real reason is to raise the humidity, to help with extinguishing and the blowing embers in the storm and to slow down the beast. And I call the beast a fire. If you've ever seen the fire, the ember storm is the most important, the most dangerous part of the fire, is what I believe. If you look at the Palisades Fire, the fire was jumping from place to place to place. It's because of the ember storms. That storm gets ahead of everything, ignites small fires, starts things going, and then when the monster catches up to it, that's where we have the real fire. And so what we're trying to do is with the wildfire suppression system, we're trying to provide more time for the firefighters to attend to priorities, helps to save lives of the firefighters who do all that they can to save our lives and our homes, and to influence the insurance companies so that we can maintain a reasonable fire insurance. In our community alone, we've had over almost 30 homes that have been canceled for fires because of the interface that we have with the National Forest. And 2018 was rated the eighth-worst year for fires in the United States. 8.5 million acres were destroyed, over half a million people were evacuated, and a loss of over 100 people plus firefighters.
How many of your homeowners, did you say, have been canceled or not renewed for homeowner's insurance because of fire risk?
It's about 30. And the ones that have kept their insurance, it's in some places, instances, it's been doubled to what it used to be. What is the Fire Suppression System? This is an important mitigation tool for the fire department and firefighters. It's 1,700 feet long with 22 sprinklers. It runs from the southeast of us to the southwest, between the division of the Cathedral Pines and the Prescott Pines Mobile Home. The sprinkler system will be turned on on the first sign of an ember storm threading Cathedral Pines. The National Forest has recommended that we get at least two inches of water laid down ahead of the fire, and the system is easy to maintain. It's not a hard system, and I brought a quick example. These parts and everything here for this system can be bought at any warehouse, not warehouse, Home Depot, Lowe's, Ace Hardware. It's made real simple. These are the posts that we'll be putting them on. They're treated wood, and they sit down here inside. So because of the animals, we have deers, javelina, and so what we're always worried about is them coming along and knocking things down and to affect the neighborhood. So this is the type of sprinkler that we're going to be installing. It's a mechanical sprinkler, and it sprays out 50 feet and straight out with 100-foot diameter. So this is the type of sprinklers. On each sprinkler that's throughout, the 22 sprinklers, they'll have a valve here on the bottom, and that's where the firefighters or the National Forest can come along, turn on or off any which ones they think that they don't need. Now, this is a map of Cathedral Pines, and this has been a survey that we did of the utility lines and the property lines. And you'll see the blue line that runs from the far east down to Jack Pines. You'll see Sillola Drive. All the little red dots are where the sprinklers go. And when we surveyed everything and we put the sprinklers up, we're very thoughtful about what we're using and what we're doing, and we're replacing the sprinklers. Because of the terrain is very rough, and it's very elevated and drops down quickly in a lot of places, we use this type of a sprinkler so that when it sprays, it slowly sprays. It's a two-to-three gallon-a-minute sprayer, and it's a fine mist, but it'll lay down an inch and a half of water in two hours. They cross over to one another, and the sprayers spray back up against the house. So not only do they spray towards the Mobile Home Park, there's 100 mobile homes in that park, they've got propane tanks, and they're very heavily forced inside there. So this will spray towards the Mobile Home Park. When the winds come up, we're planning on using the wind to help us out, too, because of the ember storm. It'll blow the water back into the homes, and it'll help put out those embers that lay on the back. So wildfire system design has got 22 sprinklers. They'll be mounted on Ponarosa Pines and on treated four-by-four posts, just like this one, sprayed at an angle of 180 to 320 degrees. They're mechanical sprayers. They use the 2.2, the three gallons per minute. In the two hours that we need to run these things, they'll use 8,700 gallons of water. Our water tank is 84,000 gallons, so we'll be using about 10% of that. The city now has two emergency generators and two emergency pumps because during the Indian Fire, ASP turned off the power, so the water tanks weren't being full. Now, from what I understand, I'm talking to the water department, that in an emergency, when there is a fire, those tanks will fill up at 1,500 gallons per minute. And if the tank was full and nothing was working, we would still only use 10% of that water that's in the tank. So we need an adequate supply and pressure for two hours to run that system. The system has been used in Yosemite Park during the mayor fire, and Prescott Fire also has a portable unit, so the bladder that they use. The system also is being used in Spain, where they call it the Guardian System, and they're using recycled water for it. And then also in China, in an old village that's made of straw. It's an ancient village that people go to, and they have a system there that's a sprinkler system that, because the village burned down at one time before, they're using it theirs. So the system is being used in different places around the world. So what does the sprinklers look like? This is my backyard. I built one so that I could demonstrate it to different people so that they could see what is going on. And if you look onto the left of the screen, those are mounted in the tree at 10 foot. They spray at arc. When you look at the one on the right that's behind my workshop, and that sprays, and you can see the fine mist going in there. And within 10 to 15 minutes, you can feel the humidity rise in that area. The fire department was there with Conrad Jackson, who has been a big supporter of ours, with a fire marshal and a fire chief, and they were impressed with the way that the system operated. It's not going to put out the fire. What it's going to do is it's going to slow down the fire, once again, giving the fighter-fighters time to pay attention to what's priority. Okay, responsible of the operation. The city is going to install a two-inch water meter on an 8-inch water line that runs through Cathedral Pines into the Mobile Home Park. Cathedral Pine's FireWise team will test the system annually each spring to ensure that it's 100% operation and turn it on in the threat. When there's a threat in the community, the first sign of embers, firefighters will be trained on the system so that they could operate it. So far, what we've done on the project on the old, we've already had the design done and engineered, it's been into the city. We're waiting for improvement. We've done all the utilities and property establishment surveys. That's completed. And now, I should have brought some water with me. And now, what we're waiting for is that it be finished being reviewed through the city, and then what we're asking is that we get some help with the impact fees and the meter, because the only purpose that we're going to be using this system for is for fire. We're on the front lines of the forest. We interface with the National Forest, and if those tankers hadn't have been here to help out with the fire, it is written that the fire could have burned into Mountain Club, into the Haisley, and burned its way into the city of Prescott, and we could have lost everything that we have. Now, the picture on the right for what we've started, Cathedral Pines is a very aggressive community. We don't overstep our authority. We follow the guidelines of the National Forest, the Prescott Fire Department, Arizona. We've had all these organizations come and help us. We spend about $50,000 of our own money every year on FireWise, and this year, we started grants, and part of the problem was we needed to start getting ready for this sprinkler system. So the picture on the left, this is in April, before we started the mitigation project. And the picture on the right-hand side is what it looks like now. And I think this home looks absolutely gorgeous, and all along down the line, we've done this. This is Dem Fran, one of the helpers from the FireWise. You can see how all the brush going down the trail. Remember myself being pictured on the right-hand side? This is what this trail looks like now. It's actually a ravine that's supposed to be for water draining out of Cathedral Pines. We made a trail. This trail goes 750 feet on the backside of our property, which would be the south side, running west to east between us and the Mobile Home Park, and the terrain is very steep. You can see the rock. This was always going to be maintained. This is where the sprinkler system's going, so that when there's a fire comes, that the firefighters will have a clear path of running down, walking on, and being safe and not getting injured. Now, the one picture that I asked you to remember to look at, this is where we talked about the standard growth. This is what we've done. This is what we've cleaned up. We've done 1,700 feet. I believe we've got 10 loads of chips out, and maybe, how much wood would you say we got?
Three tons of wood and 20 tons of chips.
So we've done a massive massification just to get ready for this sprinkler system. We believe that it will help the firefighters. The fire department is standing behind us on this one. They believe it's going to work with the massification that we do, with the FireWise that we do, and this sprinkler... that we do, and this sprinkler system. I think that when the fire does come in the Prescott, that we're going to stand a better chance and not have to worry. One of the things that we do worry about, that I do worry about, is the firefighters themselves. In 2018, we had almost 56,000 fires. What do you, 1.3 million firefighters is not able to cover all of that. And if we have a bad fire season and they're spread out all over the place, any little bit that we can do will help. Thank you for your time. Any questions? You're right. You guys have a nice day.
So how much is this meter and the, um...
Impact?
Impact fees going to cost?
It's, uh...
Meters?
I thought, it's about $10,000. Total. That's the total. That's the impact fee.
I can answer that question, Mayor.
Thank you.
Gwen Rowitch, Public Works Director. So my staff and I have been reviewing the plans for this alternative system. The applicant is requesting a two-inch meter, not a 5/8 inch meter. The impact fees for a two-inch meter are approximately $42,000. The cost of the meter itself is just under $1,000. So you're talking about around $43,000 for the impact fees. As we all know, impact fees by state law cannot be waived. They are accounted for in a separate account from all our other accounts in the city. They can be paid for from a, one of our other funds by the city, but they cannot be waived in their totality because the state law prohibits that. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about the fees that might be associated with this.
Are you planning on having an assessment to your property owners there?
Say again?
Are you planning on having an assessment to the property owners to cover these costs?
Uh, no, we're working on a grant right now. In fact, the first of June, we should find out if we got a grant from the National Forest. But it's not going to cover everything.
So what do you expect? If you do get the grant, how much would it be?
Uh, we're hoping to get like 56,000? 53,000.
So if you did get that grant, it pretty much cover your cost?
No, that won't. I was told it was going to be about $13,000 for the two-inch meter and, and the fees for the permit. Uh, now I'm being told it's 43,000. So I'm just kind of getting mixed signals here. But the 53,000 that we're getting is for the, put the system in, is 1,700 feet of two-inch water line plus tapping into the...
So you couldn't use that for the impact fees? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I have a question for Conrad. You've obviously taken a close look at this proposal and the condition of Cathedral Pines in general. How would you rate their Firewise status? I mean, I live in a Firewise community and I got a neighbor who doesn't do his work. So you need to have them all Firewise so it doesn't jump the line and start a fire inside the community and then have this suppression system be bypassed?
So I think the Cathedral Pines exist, their, their fear factor is a lot higher than a lot of the other neighborhoods in Prescott because of their proximity and because of their history with the Indian Fire. So they've been very, very proactive. As far as the neighborhoods and within Prescott go, they've been one of the more proactive groups to take advantage of city services that are associated with it. So, I mean, I've, I've actually, they were so concerned about it, they actually brought me in to evaluate all of their members, like the board members' homes, to make sure that they weren't playing above the law, as it were, as far as their management of their systems. So they're super proactive. And what's really cool about that, for my, most of you know my stance about the importance of community. Their efforts in doing what they're doing with this project have, have had bleed over effect. And so the neighboring Mobile Home Park has engaged in a gigantic chipping project. Just literally got an email back and forth with them. They want to bring in a dumpster so they can take advantage of our, our 40-yard dumpster program to remove leaf litter, pine cones. And this is really important to me because the very first call a year and a half ago that I got from somebody who had their insurance non-renewed was that Mobile Home Park right there. A woman in tears, very first one. So it's, for me, it's like full circle. It's coming around and it's, it's, it's a worthwhile project. They're doing a good job. And they've been consulting with me since the beginning as far as how it should be laid out, what, where the weaknesses are, where the strengths are. And having been doing wildland fire for 30 years, I've seen the importance of sprinkler systems. I once had Corey Mosher and Captain Nate Seats with me. We saved a subdivision in California with three sprinklers. So it has value. Any other...
Yeah, I read about a, maybe a neighborhood in Pacific Palisades that had something similar to this. And they were able to save a half a dozen homes because they had a sprinkler suppression system installed.
80% of homes get destroyed from the ember fallout. The humidity that gets brought up into that area is enough to help overcome a lot of that ember fallout. When we look at the Legato Fire Easter year ago, if it hadn't been the overcast night that it was, I don't know how much of Prescott Valley we would still have. So it has...
I think the biggest fear here is the Crown Fire, is it not?
Say that again.
Isn't the biggest fear Crown Fire burning up the hill?
Psychologically, the biggest fear is. The Hollywood moment is the Crown Fire. But the, and we have an issue with it because we have a very compact forest that has not been managed in a lot of areas. We have, we should see 25 to 40 mature ponderosa pines in an acre. We have easily double and triple that in many areas. It creates a continuity level that is not healthy for the trees or for our safety.
Has their efforts to Firewise their community helped at all get, getting some of their insurance policies reinstated? Are you aware of that?
We haven't seen that outcome yet. It's still a work in progress as far as we're concerned. We're still working with the state and the feds to try to figure out how to move that, move that needle.
So looking at the map, it looks like the preparation is for a fire that's burning uphill going from the southeast to the northwest. Is that generally the, the common wind direction?
The terrain as where their, where their border is, that would be an accurate assessment. But it's taking, it's looking at the uphill component as far as fire coming from down below in the ponderosa in the Mobile Home Park there or to the forest to the south like we saw with the Indian Fire. I think ultimately this is, we'll say, stage one of a multi-stage project. Success in this component is going to be commensurate to lead to a additional component where they start working that system even further down the pipe if it, if it works like we want it to work.
Well, we know it's not going to, it's going, not going to put out a fire.
No, it's not intended to put out a fire.
It's going to give you some time to respond.
Yeah, and it will do that. And then some of the other components, the fact that they've already gun, gun in there and done a lot of their vegetation mitigation has already opened up that area. So accessibility for firefighters is a lot higher, especially on the uppermost end. There's the long bench that they talk where the water drainage is. They've already opened it up and there's a clear pathway. So it, as firefighters, if we needed to extend hose lines into that area and expand or have easy access or even have a, basically a hand line pre-built in, in helping protect, it's already there. Easy access, it's an improvement for us on whole.
So have you assessed or have an opinion on how effective this actually would be? That's where I know it's impossible to really predict.
Right, how do you measure the negative?
But there should be some analysis of other communities that are using it and have had wildfires that have been suppressed to at least a period of time that allowed them to have a standard response to put out the fire.
There's, there's enough data out there to show, when we go back into communities that have been destroyed in wildland fire, where we see the advantages of having sprinkler systems deployed in those neighborhoods. They're not 100% effective, but they definitely move the bar to improvements in safety.
Counselman Moore, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. So it appears from your presentation, this is not an automated system, this is a manual system.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, so is there like a chain of command? I mean, who, who goes out and turns on the sprinklers and which ones get turned on and who, I mean...
When we turn the system on to begin at the first stage, it will be when the embers come in. When we start seeing embers come in, we know that the fire is approaching and it's at least an hour or more away. We turn the complete system on.
Who's "we"?
It'll be the Cathedral Pines Firewise Association. Also, we've understood that the fire department and the National Forest would like to come in and, and get trained on it because they want to be able, they brought up the point when I talked to the Arizona Fire, is the reason I put the shut-off valve on it so they control the sprinklers on which ones they want on and which ones they want off. So the idea is for us as the association, that when we see this, we want to work with the fire departments, the National Forest very closely. But our idea is to turn it on, leave the association, and by having these different fire departments know how to use it, they could come in and say, okay, we don't need it no more, shut it down. But if they left it on for two hours, we're only, again, we're only using 10% of that. And there's been other studies on, that I've looked at where it's saved a couple of billion dollars in damage by having these systems in. But it doesn't work on its own. It's everything that we do to help, cleaning up around the house, around the five-foot around, cleaning up the brush, cutting it back. All this stuff comes together and it's that extra tool in the box for the firefighters. What is a house worth? What is a firefighter's life worth? What is a person's life worth? It's, the, the system is so much cheaper than anything else. We saved the community one house, that there's 500 to a million dollars. The system's $53,000. We're only going to use it in the case of a fire. What if it saves the whole community? Was it worth it in the end? I would say so.
How many property owners in your association?
We've got 75.
75.
And another 30 lots.
If I could, I'd like to add, there's, it was a misconception this morning in the Courier's, a letter to the editor that stated that the city had picked out this neighborhood and was selecting them above all other neighborhoods. And I want to point out that this is a, this is a neighborhood that is trying to proactively take care of themselves. They are trying to improve their resiliency and this isn't, we came to them, they're, they're coming to us.
Was your community Firewise status confirmed before you started working on this?
Yes, it was. We've been a Firewise community since 2011. They got together after the Indian Fire.
After the Indian Fire.
Put everything together.
Good response. Councilman Gambotti?
I had three questions, but thanks to my good friend Conrad, I'm down to two. I didn't quite follow you, that you're going to use 8,700 gallons of water in two hours. Is that coming direct from the city or is that coming out of a tank?
That's coming out of the tank. That's what the tank was put there for.
Okay. Oh, you have a tank now?
Yes, we do.
Okay. You talked about trimming brush, but I'm looking on page 25 of this, of your presentation. And those trees look awfully close together. Have you thinned the trees out in the neighborhood?
Well, okay. You've got to remember, Arizona's got its laws about property owners. We have laws too. And so a lot of these homes were built prior to the National Forest Guidelines being accepted by the city of Prescott. And I was on, I was on the Firewise. So these homes were built back in the 90s and the, and the early 2000s. So what we try to do, is we set up a priority. We try to make sure that we get the five feet between the trees. If there's a tree that's built up against the house, because at one time you had to build around the trees, they don't do that no more. So what we tell the homeowner, you got to cut up 10 feet above. And then on the, if we've got trees and junipers that are up against the house, we tell them, you got to cut the back five feet away. Cut it away. Nobody's going to see it. And they cry and they moan and they cuss me out more than they do you, believe me. And I don't get paid for it. And so we work with our best. We follow the guidelines, the National Forest Guidelines. We brought everybody in. The day I found out that Conrad was the risk management, I think a week later, we had you up there, didn't we?
Yes.
I don't know everything about fires, but I've been in the construction industry for over 60 years. I can't tell you the number of places that I've cleaned up, communities that I've cleaned up when I was a child with my father and said, why did that house make it? And, and that was in Duarte when Bradbury burned down. And he says, look at it and tell me what you think. We burnt, we cleaned up burnt buildings, all kinds of stuff. We are trying to be proactive and, and get other people involved in this. This could be accepted by other communities throughout Prescott. It's not if we're going to have a fire, it's when we're going to have a fire. And I want to save my communities and I want to save firefighters. I don't want them to rush in into a fire and lose their life because they don't even know who I am. And they're giving their life for me. And I admire that. And I feel bad about when the 19 died. Why does that have to happen? It's time to be proactive, not retroactive.
Yes, and my question is, are you thinning the trees in the development?
Much as we possibly can without them crying about it.
Okay. All right, we got to kind of wrap it up here. We're running out of time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a, I didn't realize you were from the construction industry. I've got a couple of questions on the engineering of this system. But also, has this been recognized by the insurance companies yet? I mean, have they reduced it?
I'm getting ready. In fact, I just finished up a bunch of work and I'm sending all the photographs and information over to the insurance company to see what they say. I don't know what they're going to say, but I know they come out and inspect my home yearly and mine passes all the time. But I got my own system now and so I'm going to show them photographs of it and they'll probably come out and take a look at it.
Yeah, so I'm assuming you have a pressurized tank that's going to force this water in those dis...
No, I do not.
So is it not going to take any kind of an extra pressurized tank to be able to push that water? You said a 52?
No, this is my house. So I designed my own system.
Okay.
And so what I did is I installed tanks. I have a backup generator so that when Arizona shuts off the power, I have a backup generator. I put in special switches, special ways to fill the tanks up. I have a special pump that's designed to push the water 250 feet in the air.
So it'll be the same thing if you do the whole extended area?
No.
Okay.
The simplicity of the design is tapping into the eight-inch water line with a two-inch and it will be basically that. It's like my system, but the power's coming from the, the weight of the water in the tank.
And it's regular PVC.
Okay, we've got, we've got our voting meeting starting in about 12 minutes now. I want to hear a couple of the public comments.
Debra Thalassidis?
I'll pass, thank you. Adriana Adoka?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was the author of the letter this morning in the newspaper and I did not mean any disrespect to the group nor the city in terms of this is something that was, however Conrad, you had indicated, I didn't really mean it that way. What I meant and what I, as I'm listening here, this is a tremendous opportunity for a pilot project for the city with, in partnership with these neighborhoods because a significant amount of our city is in that southern border. So I live southwest of town and what was not in the letter, it was edited poorly unfortunately, is that there are campsites, like within a mile and a half of where I live. And every Sunday I walk in the forest and I would say, one out of four Sundays that I walk, I end up putting out campfires because people leave in a hurry Sunday morning, they want to get back to the valley or what have you. And so their fires are still burning. Now, maybe they're smoldering, but they're still burning. And with the winds like we have today, I was on the radio yesterday and the 60 mile an hour wind gust for today, that's going to tear through, that's, that's going to knock out the entire city if that were to happen. So I think this is a fantastic idea. I think communities need to embrace this. My community is a Firewise community. We are fined $5,000 if we don't do Firewise. And that doesn't include the cost of then doing it. So I just redid my Firewise yesterday, in fact. I was cutting down my own trees, Ted. So, but at any rate, I think this is a community effort and I applaud any efforts that we can have as the council, working with... working with the fire department and working with these other companies that are, there's a company called Fire Med X. And he comes through our neighborhood, and I think he's paid for by our neighborhood to make sure that our, our properties are properly taken care of. So I think this is a fantastic tool in our toolbox. And think about the cost. We, we know the human cost, which is horrific. But what is a tanker run cost? One tanker, one big tanker coming over our property is probably in the tens of thousands of dollars, I'm guessing, the loaded cost. But thank you for this. And thank you, neighborhood, for, for doing this as well.
All right, thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, good luck with the program. We'll probably discuss it further to see if we can have some impact on the cost of your impact fees. But as Gwen mentioned, they can't be waived. But the city might be able to have some contribution to see if those could be reduced to a level that would allow you to proceed with your project. All right, anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned and we'll reconvene at 3 o'clock for the voting meeting.